Work session, meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale Tuesday, October 4th. I'd ask everyone if you could please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
I'm done leading.
Here.
Councilmember Sondemeyer.
So moved.
Costa.
Here.
Delaripa.
Here.
DeMato.
Here.
Hudson.
Yes.
Yasty.
Also with us are municipal clerk Jane McCarthy and Borough Attorney Fred Semra. This is official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale. On November 28th, the daytime was faxed to all local news and media placed here at Borough Hall. There's no need for an early executive session. There are two items of non-agenda. The two are, we had introduced an amending, a possibility of amending a zone within the boundaries of Glenwall Lake. We had a second and final reading set for October 18th. We'll be amending that second and final reading to November 22nd, so that the planning board has time to review. And the second non-agenda item are two tax appeal settlements recommended by the Borough Attorney. One is for block 2004, lot 371, West Shore Drive, refund of $441, an assessment reduction of about $11,000. And the second item on non-agenda is an assessment for block 60, lot 13, 43 Main Street, a reduction of assessed value from 558 to 450. And, trying to see if I have the refund amount on that one. Sorry? Yeah, which is a, that's a $12,000, $12,442, because that's for 2012, 13, and 14. So those are settlements we'll be handling this evening, non-agenda. At this time, I need a motion for early public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports, Jane, do you have anything for us?
The only item I have is the, it's on the agenda, the last day to register to vote for the election is October 18th, and our clerk's office will be open till 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Fred, anything for us?
Mayor, no, just, you know, with respect to the rehabilitation ordinance?
Yes.
Is that something you want me to discuss when you?
Well, I was going to introduce by title, so you can discuss now.
Okay. You, we really need to have, you know, two steps. And one would be the designation by resolution.
Okay.
In the area needing rehabilitation, and the ordinance, so we can introduce tonight,
to that point. But then, you know, at the next meeting, we'll be able to go over, from a tax standpoint,
what it means. You know, we'll have that breakout and presentation, what the actual tax abatement process is all about.
Okay, and the resolution defining, I thought we were declaring the whole borough.
The whole borough is correct, that's what it would say.
So you need a separate resolution besides the ordinance?
Right.
So can we do that tonight?
Right. You know, the, we can introduce, and then by the next meeting, we'll have a resolution before the adoption.
Okay.
And, and the ordinance.
And the planning board's already reviewed, so there's no reason to go back to the planning board.
Correct, that's right.
So I'll just do a second and final for November 22nd.
That's fine.
Gives us plenty of time.
Right. So would you want the, you know, if everything goes in order, would you want the actual abatement to be effective January 1st?
Yes.
Right? I mean, by the time it gets in? That way, it's all, it's a lot more definitive to.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Any council member have anything for us?
I guess the, just go back to the car show and the 5K.
Yeah.
It was really successful. We had over 210 runners, and after this year, our pledge will be over $50,000, pled to West Park. So it was a two-day event, which was really, really good.
Yeah, thank you for all your efforts, to you and all the members of the fire department. Great day.
Just did a great job at a DPW first aid squad, police, to help us out.
Always a success. It ties nice with the kickoff of Pride Day every year, so, thank you for that. Anyone else have anything? Item nine, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yep.
Other than resolution 2016 10.1, extending best wishes to library employee Margie Sweet. She resigned from her part-time position here after 21 years of service. We recognized her at a little luncheon within the library on Friday, but she moved on to full-time employment elsewhere, and we wish her very much success in the future. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pending items, second and final reading for public hearing, ordinance 21 2016, amending 9258 of the Borough Code, titled M1Q Light Industrial Inquiry Zone. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, copies available to the public, so a motion may be made that it be read by title.
And who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that would be an ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale, County of the State of New Jersey, to amend section 92-58 of the Borough Code entitled M1Q Light Industrial Inquiry Zone.
Thank you. I need a motion now for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 21 2016, please come on up.
London, Hutton, 86 Bandana Avenue. The ordinance says that there's going to be a road going from the quarry to Wanacue, that it would be open 24/7. Where is that road supposed to be coming from, from the quarry, to get to Wanacue?
Right, if, there'll be no 24-hour shipping or transportation until there is access onto Union from Wanacue. The proposed site, because it's not definitive yet, but the proposed site is by The Burger King. Where The Burger King is, it's always been the, with or without Bloomingdale taking any action, that's always been the proposed site for Tilkon. They negotiated that years ago.
Where are they going to be going? I mean, I have a copy of the tax map, and I don't see how, where they're going to be going.
That would be between Wanacue and Tilkon, but my, my.
Where's it coming from? Is it going to be in Blooming, is it going to be partially in Bloomingdale? So it'll be 24/7 partially in Bloomingdale.
The truck, the shipping and trucking, because the quarry's in Bloomingdale, we control the hours of operation. So we're not allowing the shipping portion of that until they have access on Union in Wanacue. Again, to confirm there's no access in Bloomingdale, never will be. And as far as I know, from negotiations back as far as 2005 or '06, the access will be the road that is next to The Burger King, that feeds the Elks camp.
Okay, but it goes to Burger King, and then it goes to quarry. Where, where is it connecting to the quarry? And how, what quarry?
Well, the quarry, the quarry owns land adjacent to that road.
So it's all going to be on Wanacue?
The road itself, the road itself. Are you talking about the internal road within the quarry?
I'm talking about where, where the quarry is.
Mm-hmm.
On the map. We have, there's a.
You want to show me what you're looking, I'll just show you exactly.
So here's the quarry, and here's.
Bi-coastal.
So where they're going to go?
This is, quarry owns all this land.
Okay.
So their plan, however they want to get there, is this way.
So it's not going to be going in Bloomingdale at all?
The road itself. Correct, the road itself will not be in Bloomingdale.
Shouldn't that be stated in the?
Well, it says.
It says the access road is going to be on Union Ave, or Union Ave.
If access to the site is from Union Ave, Wanacue, shipping can be permitted, allowed.
But it's not saying anything about where the road is in Bloomingdale. I mean, it.
There is no road in Bloomingdale. They, they will not get 24 hours until they have access from the road.
Well, they can have access here, and they can go like this, go right in here. What's to prevent that?
Well, they can't, because if you remember, the overlay ordinance clearly states there be no access from Bloomingdale.
So there's, so even though the quarry is overlay, so it's going to have, it's going to have to all be at Wanacue.
Correct. The, remember, remember, remember the overlay ordinance.
Mm-hmm. This is the overlay ordinance, it says part here.
Okay, so where are you coming here? Oh, is this bi-coastal?
This is bi-coastal.
Okay, that they can come this way?
Mm-hmm.
Because, and this still being Wanacue?
Uh-huh.
Okay. But again, no, this wouldn't be Wanacue, this would be Bloomingdale.
This is Wanacue, the line is Wanacue.
No, no, this is the line on Wanacue. Bi-coastal's all of Bloomingdale.
Okay.
So this would still be Bloomingdale. This is all Bloomingdale.
Right, that's all Bloomingdale, right?
So they can't access a road in Bloomingdale.
Well, this is going to Union Ave.
But from Bloomingdale, the ordinance says from Wanacue.
But what's to prevent them from going like this, going around here?
The ordinance prevents them from doing that.
Doesn't prevent them?
It does, because it says.
It says the access road is coming from?
Wanacue.
Wanacue.
And this access road, in your conceptual idea, is coming from Bloomingdale.
You could go to Wanacue, and then go to Al.
Is this, is this access road coming from Bloomingdale property, Bloomingdale?
But it doesn't say it can't come from Bloomingdale borders.
If, if access to the site is from Union Ave, Wanacue, New Jersey.
Access, not, rather, access could be there, but it should still go through Bloomingdale.
The plan?
It should still be 24/7.
Okay.
There's nothing to prevent them going right behind here, going there, and then driving over. There's nothing to prevent that in that ordinance.
Well, there is.
There's not.
Well, from, the line you just drew, because there's the affordable housing sites in the middle of that, so that would never occur.
Affordable housing site is that little bar that's over there, in between those, that area, and go through Bloomingdale, cut over to Wanacue, and then go out.
They will never have access from Bloomingdale, ever.
Then why don't you just state that?
Because the overlay states it, and this ordinance states, from Wanacue. I understand your question, but no changes are being made. This is going to come from, you know, the access will only be into Wanacue. And the plan prior.
Access to Wanacue, doesn't say how, how, how is the access to Wanacue?
If access to the site is from Union Ave, Wanacue.
Right.
Right.
And where is this?
So your, your drawing is access to the site from Bloomingdale.
No, it's coming from Wanacue, but how do they get to Wanacue?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's not. If they want to come out, well, you just drew on that map from bi-coastal, would you really, you can't.
You're not talking about bi-coastal?
Yeah, you are.
John, John, we all know that for years, they've been negotiating with the Elks camp.
Right.
And they want to put their access road.
By The Burger King.
Through the Elks camp, and come down that way. That's where it's going to go.
And finally, people all know, but it's not in the ordinance.
Let me, let me see your.
And it not being in the ordinance could be problematic.
Well, they're not getting any of these hours. The only change here is the access. They're not getting any of the changes to control that access road.
Your drawing here, bi-coastal doesn't even touch Union Ave. There's a lake there, okay? There's a lake, this is all water. This is, this is, this is Kierfert Lake.
So how are they going to be getting to that area?
By The Burger King. There's no way they could.
And Burger King is going to run where?
Their goal is to get them to 87.
Listen to me, listen to me, bi-coastal is surrounded by.
But it hasn't been really prohibited.
Wait, listen, listen.
No, no, that's their goal.
Bi-coastal, your drawing here is coming from the overlay through bi-coastal, out on Union Ave.
Well, then maybe you should say not using Ave.
But this isn't, there's a lake here, there's a lake, there's, it's landlocked, there's homes.
I understand that. You have to be more specific.
I think we are. It says if access to the site is from Union Ave and Wanacue, then the hours would be extended.
How is that road connecting to the quarry, is what my question is.
I don't know what we could do differently.
And it's not, you're not prohibiting it coming from, coming from Union Ave?
If access to the site is from.
It says, it says Wanacue.
Union Ave, Wanacue.
That's access, that's getting into it.
Right.
How they get into that access.
The question is, once they get through the access, how do they get up to their site? So you're saying they can get through the access, and then make a right, and come along the back, and that's what you're asking?
No, that's not what you're, that's not what your question, you were drawing up.
I see.
You're, so you're, you're asking me, where is their internal road?
I mean, they can, they can put the road anywhere they want, and then just get out in Wanacue.
But you get by the Elks camp.
Right.
Is it in writing?
With Wanacue, with Wanacue it is.
The only change, the only reason we're reviewing this tonight, and the only change we're making, is because of hours of operation.
I understand that.
Which they're not going to get any of this until the access road is complete. It's not complete today. It may take them a year, it may take them two years.
But there's nothing to prohibit them from coming through Bloomingdale to get into that access road to go out through Wanacue?
There is, because what you just stated would mean the access is from Bloomingdale, and the ordinance prohibits it.
Access from Bloomingdale to Wanacue, and then they, then they go out?
If access to the site is from Union Ave, Wanacue.
Yeah, they go into Union, Wanacue, and then work through Bloomingdale.
Well, one.
There's nothing to prevent that.
One.
So you wanted to read that the hall road is strictly in Wanacue, is what you're saying?
No, 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 she's not talking.
I just want to make sure the access is not going to be.
She's not talking about the internal road of, we can't control the internal road at Tilkon.
Maybe we have to say that it will not be on any part of the quarry overlay.
What won't, though? The, the actual access road?
Not connected to the, um.
But that's in the overlay.
Right.
Ordinance, and so.
They don't even get quarry zone on the overlay until they have access, it says, on Union Ave, Wanacue, New Jersey.
Right.
But your drawing, there's no way out, there's no way out of bi-coastal.
What, not bi-coastal?
Look, there's no way out of the overlay, there's no way out of bi-coastal without coming into Bloomingdale, okay? And the ordinance prohibits that.
Maybe we should prohibit them from going to the quarry overlay zone to get access to Wanacue, access road.
Why, why would you do that? The road is.
Why would I do that? Because I don't want them coming behind my house, going all the way up, going around bi-coastal, and going to Wanacue, and then going out.
So you're not, you're, but this is all Tilkon property, so their internal access road is.
This here is quarry overlay zone. This is the quarry overlay zone. I want to make sure that they're not going to be coming here from quarry overlay zone, and going out this way, going past bi-coastal, and then coming here, and they're connecting to Wanacue, then going out.
Let me ask you, how do they, how do they get out here? There's a lake here.
I don't know, they could build a bridge, who the hell knows? Well, who knows? I mean, I don't, I don't put anything past it.
I, I, you're, there's no way.
Mark my words, if this happens, this is recorded, you're telling me there's no way, and this council's prepared, there's no way, I want it in writing.
There's no way.
It's got to be in writing.
It's on the record.
It's got to be in writing.
There's no way they can even access off bi-coastal, because it's a lake.
Not bi-coastal, around bi-coastal.
Around bi-coastal, but Union Ave's all the way down here.
Yeah.
This is, this is Morse Lake entrance right here. This is Higgins Paragallo. This is open space. Linda, there's no way.
This is the open space area, this, and this is the open space.
This is bi-coastal.
Well, this is our tax map, and I'm going by what our tax map says.
I'm telling you, this is bi-coastal, this is Higgins Paragallo.
Okay. And why isn't that marked as, that is concerned, sorry, that's concerned.
Concerned, you can't go through there.
As is this, and as is this.
This is owned by Obsac River Coalition, right? It's, it's Green Acres.
But they could go, so this is.
There's no way they can get, there's no way they can get out of here, because then there's a lake all in here. There's no way. And the ordinance says they don't get the hours until they have access onto Union Ave in Wanacue, which is The Burger King.
I can see that. I'm sorry.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you.
No, as a matter of fact, even if, even if everything you're concerned about were to be true, they'd have to come in and get site plan approval. You know, like when you said, whether a bridge or a road, and, and they would have to show that actually it would be, it would be a variance, because, I, and they, there's nothing in the ordinance now that permits them to have access, so it would be at least a variance applicable.
But I don't see anything that prohibits them from access.
I'm sorry?
I don't see anything that prohibits them from access either.
But, but there's nothing, this is, I think, important, there's nothing right now, if we don't adopt this ordinance, that prohibits access, right? I mean, there's, now what we're saying is, by the way.
Come to the board and ask for it.
By the way, if you're going to have any access, here's your incentive to make sure it's from Wanacue. It's the hours. So right now, if, let's say this is defeated, there's no incentive. This is, this is to make sure that the access is from Wanacue.
And do you, I sort of understand where you're coming from.
Right.
You're saying that they could drive on Union Ave in Wanacue, make a left, and access it, because they, and say, we access from Wanacue, okay? The Wanacue border, visualize where that is. There's a lake there. They're not building a bridge.
Behind the lake.
No, there's no way to access it.
People came up to me that live in Wanacue, that Pride Day complaining about, and was like, I can't help as well, my is concerned.
They should be complaining, their, their governing body's the one that's going to have the quarry access right by The Burger King.
And it's going to be right behind, right behind some people's homes, and.
Again, that's not, that has nothing to do with Bloomingdale, has nothing to do with the overlay, has nothing, that's their deal, which they negotiated long before any of us, okay? I think that was far back as 2006, that they, the road's been coming out that way. So that's the plan. But to alleviate your concerns, if they actually wanted to do what you said, it's a, there's a lake, the entire lake runs from The Burger King?
I under, I know.
Into Bloomingdale. So, so the, the border of Wanacue is all water. So you cannot be concerned that they're going to make a left turn, build a bridge.
To go around.
How, then that would be accessing in Bloomingdale, and they're not prohibited by the ordinance.
No, the access still would be Wanacue, just go in.
No, wouldn't. If they went around the lake and came out between, between the first house and the lake, that's Bloomingdale, because that's part of bi-coastal. It's not, Linda, it's not, there's no way they can access other than The Burger King in Wanacue. There's no other Wanacue property.
Okay, I can see, but I have a more definitive map, which hopefully I'll have that tomorrow.
That's fine, that's fine. But again, it's not going to happen. And the overlay ordinance prohibits it too, so. Anyone else, please?
Anne Hawkins, 6 Pearl Street. Would the, would the setbacks have any effect on the internal location of, of any, any road that's internal to the property? The words, told them we want a 300-foot setback, we want all the screening.
Right.
We're going to make, is, is that going to?
Anything within that boundary, even including a road?
Okay, so, so at the very least, what you're saying is that the setback will provide for at least a 300-foot buffer and permanent screening.
Correct.
And then beyond that, they could, they would put their route.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any moves to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemeyer.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion, 2016 10.2, to award the revav contract to Pacific Construction. So who makes that motion first?
Second.
Discussion, as everyone recalls, we received a DOT grant for $200,000 to pave from Knoll's Road to Main Street, and the borough is making the investment on some utility work and curves and sidewalks in that vicinity, so the low bid came at $358,364. This has already been funded, it was in our capital ordinance back in June, but remember, we could not award because of the governor's work stop order on the Transportation Trust Fund Grants, which is this grant. So, we're going to award this because there's, the legislature's sitting down tomorrow, apparently they've come to an agreement, increase the gas tax, cut state tax, blah, blah, blah. I want to get the ball rolling, so I want to, I should have done this in the first place. I want, I want that motion, whoever, who moved that?
Nobody yet.
John.
No, we're in discussion, somebody moved it. John moved it. Would you amend your motion to say approval of war, award revav contract to Pacific Construction based on the lifting of the works, the work stoppage by the governor's office, okay? And second, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay. The reason being is, I don't want to award it without that caveat, because if, if they don't come to an agreement, we don't want to be, have an issue with the contractor, okay? So now we're saying we're awarding it, so that if Thursday they settle it, we're released, we're good, we can move, start the contracts, because I at least would want to start to get some of the work done before the winter. Sadly, we probably won't be paving until the spring, doing concrete curves and sidewalks in November, we're not going to do that, which kind of is frustrating, but out of our control because of the TTF being stopped. If, if they don't come to an agreement, we're fine, because we said that it would have, be based on them lifting it, and if, if there's no site, you know, you know, no future, you know, hope that this is going to be resolved, which I think it will be, then we'll have to have a discussion on what we're going to do. Are we going to still move forward and fully fund it? Or, or just stop the project entirely? So that's a separate day, okay?
You're saying you want to put it in place, so this way we can be a week or two.
If they approve it on Thursday.
So we're ahead, we're ahead of curve.
We're good, I can just start working on it. We're good, I can just start working on it.
And if they extend the deadline, then nothing happens.
If they didn't, if they didn't lift the stop work order-
Got it.
Then we're not awarding anything. If they lift it, I can move without coming back to you, have Fred review contracts, and move on. Start, have to start mobilization, do some of the utility work before the winter. Okay? If they have a big, you know, blowout, and nothing happens, and it looks real ugly, and we don't foresee anything happening-
Just drop it.
Well, then I'll come back to you at the next meeting, say, what do you want to do? Do you want to move forward, award it, and fully fund it ourselves? You're meaning, for, you know, we're not gonna get the 200? That's a separate conversation.
Yeah.
Okay? So remember, it's 358, 200s from the state, 158's on us. So hopefully they come to agreement, which I think they will, sounds like they are. You know, it's silly season, they're all gonna come to agreement, so towns can pave their roads, because they're getting a lot of heat at the legislative level, and you know what happens during silly season, so, okay? So, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemire.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa. Yes.
Just the one thing, Jane, on the resolution, that, that language is not in there, we just gotta add that caveat in there, okay? Thank you, everyone. New business. I need a motion to approve Resolution 1610-3, approving the execution of the NJDEP water extension permit application for MIR states. I'll explain in a moment. Who mo, who moves that?
Second.
Discussion. This is simply submitting to the DEP applications that have already approved for sewer and water expansion for the affordable housing site. Those, those permits were expiring, and the borough's authorizing the renewal of those sewer and water extension permits for the MIR affordable housing tract. So that's what we're doing here. Any further discussion? Roll call. Yeah, paid for by Finbar through their engineer, partner engineering. The borough see, we receive money. We're receiving, um, did you put them in there?
Nine thousand.
You know, our normal hookup fees.
Nine thousand.
One was nine thousand, and one was forty-one hundred, so about 14,000 was the total revenue to the utility.
Nice.
For those permits. And again, it's in your book, partner engineering through Finbar Investments are just, uh, these are all representative of the application fees that the engineer reviewed. I'm signing, once we get approval, then we're sending to the DEP. These are, again, already been done, we're just, uh, they're expired though. All right? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemire.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, Resolution 1610-4, authorizing sale of online auction of borough vehicles, as you know. Clean house, make some room, when we have things that we can get rid of, and the list is in your book. 2008 former police car, 108,000 miles, 2002 Dodge Ram, 70,000 miles, a GMC bus, that was the donation the county gave us. Transmission shot on that, 100,000 miles, Crown Vic, a 2000 Western Plow, and a rugby dump body, body only. So, just the list is there, this is where we're gonna go auction and try to clean, clean up the yard a little bit, so. Makes, who makes that motion?
With the new OEM vehicle coming?
Yeah.
The old one?
We could do that another time.
If you want to add it, because it's coming soon.
But I don't know, I don't wanna be without it until we get the new one, so. And I've been waiting to get this for a while, so. Any further discussion? Do I have to? You give me a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? I should've done that first. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemire.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, we're gonna introduce by title ordinance number-
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. 2016 rehabilitation incentive ordinance. First, who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
And simply, this is an ordinance to establish a rehabilitation tax abatement incentive program throughout the borough. And, sorry. Second and final reading, November 22nd, 7:00 PM. More to come. Remember, this is the one where we're gonna hopefully entice commercial properties, homeowners, to make an investment where the borough will waive the first $5,000 of tax assessments. So if someone does something that's $20,000 improvement, we could waive up to $5,000?
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry?
Up to 25,000.
Up to 25,000 for five years. Yes. So a person does a $100,000 improvement, we, we would assess them 75,000 instead of 100.
Correct.
And for five years. So if you do the math, it's about $1,000 a year savings for someone, so it's a $5,000 savings over the program, possibly an incentive for someone to come forward and make improvements all throughout town, particularly on Main Street, and obviously will be a revenue, hopefully, generator on the permit side.
As far as the details of what's gonna go in the ordinance, can we discuss that now, or is that something that we should discuss?
Well, I-
We should discuss that now?
What, what I would-
For example, I, I'll let-
Excuse me, if I may, just, just for essence of time, and, and why don't we send that to committee?
Okay.
And you and John, or me and you and whomever, under quorum, can meet with Fred and do that, you know, instead of-
All right, that makes sense.
Before we come, because that's why I pushed the adoption to November 22nd, plenty of time. You don't mind?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Does it go with everybody? Any further discussion?
Sure.
Do a roll call on that.
Councilmember Sondemire.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we do have two non-agenda items. The first is, uh, we do this by resolution on these tax title, these tax leads. Resolution 10, five and six, again, um, tax appeal settlements on Block 2004, 37-1, 20 West Shore Drive, and again, the second, one, Block 6001, Lot 13, 43 Main Street. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes.
What happens if you don't agree? First one is 400 bucks, we pass, right?
Right.
The second one being 12,000 dollars.
Well, no, the, the, what would happen is-
Quite a bit of dollars.
But it's over, it's three years, it's 2012.
No, no, understood, but, you know, it's-
No, you, what, what happened is, you, you'd prepare your expert reports, and then you would go to trial, and then there'd be a determination from the tax court. You know, we, we try a number of cases at the county board, because it's a very efficient way, and the ones we cannot resolve. At the state tax court, if, in this case, our expert, Scott Holzhauer, felt as though this settlement would be a better outcome than had we gone forward and went to court, and that saves us his expert report fee and his testimony, which would probably be somewhere around $10,000. And then if there was an adverse decision, it could be more, it could be less, I mean, it depends. And then there's interest on the judgment. There's no interest here, there's no other cost for experts, and so, um, any, any settlement we bring before you, the assessor and the expert have negotiated that settlement, and they've, they've looked at the possibilities and believe that this is a better outcome than if we were to proceed. You know, we usually get a concession from the property owner as well, because they don't want to deal with that cost, but internally, we already know where we think the value may be. So that's, that's how it's generally worked, you know?
They're far and few between, but we take the advice of our professionals, we-
And I will say, Mayor, about two years ago, we did, for, we did override, and we said no, with respect to a certain settlement, and then, um, it put us in a position, in that particular case, it doesn't have, you know, we, we felt in reviewing it that we could perhaps go to trial and, and do better, and then we ultimately came back with a settlement that was much more favorable. You know, I don't, I don't see that here, we, we had talked about that before we made that determination.
This won't have any, it could, right, repercussion of other homes coming forward saying, hey.
Well, the larger one was a commercial, the larger one was Main Street.
Was it, yeah.
Right. A large apartment building with retail, so. Okay? Any further? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemire.
And one final item was, I need a motion, do we need a resolution or just a motion? To amend the second and final reading for this proposed rezoning map change?
Uh, ju, just a, a motion.
Okay, so who makes that motion, again, for changing the second and final reading from October 18th to November 22nd for the proposed Glenwall Lake rezoning and amending the zoning map?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
That was ordinance, that was ordinance 25.
25, 2016, thank you. All in favor?[1474.44]